All right, welcome everybody to City Council. Regular meeting today, so we will call our meeting to order and have roll call.
And coffee. Bloodson.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Coldiron.
Here.
Rutt.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher.
Here.
Fortham.
I'm here, so we've got Korm. Tonight, our invocation is actually going to be by Shea Boucher. So she's going to be kind of two roles here. She's representing the First Presbyterian Church in offering prayer tonight.
Do I go up there or do I go over here?
Wherever you'd like.
Oh, they were here. So, thank you. So Backpack Blessings is something that the Presbyterian Church leads with the help of the community. So I wanted to give you the dates on that. It's August the 7th, and I'll send this if I can send this information out. And it's just a time when people in the community come and pick up school supplies. So we have, it's open to anybody, and they get everything that's on the list. Pretty much everything is on the list. So how we can support that, the community support that, there are different ways. There's an Amazon wishlist, and again, we'll figure out how to get this out. You can just drop them off at the church, or you can make monetary donations. It is an amazing program that's been around a while, and I'm really proud of our community that supports it.
Awesome. Thank you, Shea.
Fire your heads, please. I've never said it. Dear God in heaven, thank you so much for this opportunity to come together and serve. We are grateful that we're able to do that, dear Lord. I pray that you will guide our conversations and decisions with wisdom, empathy, and compassion. Lord, I thank you for all the ways that you were with us, and if it be your will, dear God, please let the thunder win, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Shea. All right, we're all thunder up tonight.
We are.
Well, let's start off with item number one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay.
And Bloodson.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldiron.
Yes.
Rutt.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Fortham.
Yes. Okay, item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda or citizens presenting their concerns or comments. Jimmy?
Twenty Central signal up.
Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. I want to talk about unmoed grass.
Okay.
I just want somebody to explain to me the difference between owning a lot in the city limits of Perry and owning a lot with a house on it in the city limits of Perry. Because it seems like the lots that are owned that aren't occupied, they're allowed to just go crazy. And I know it's an exceptional year, and if it was just, if this was the only year that this has been an issue, I wouldn't even be here. Because I get it, I mean, grass is growing, you can go outside and hear it grow. But every year, I have to call the city multiple times to get those lots up on fairway mode. And that's not the only place. I'm harping on fairway because it does affect, I mean, it does affect me. I mean, I get tired of killing snakes in my yard because they come up from the grass that's tall, but just look around town. My biggest concern is to make sure we're not doing a double standard. What I mean by that is, we're not going to these little old men and little old ladies that are single, living on paycheck to paycheck, and threatening them, "Look, if you don't mow your grass, we're going to mow it for you, we're going to put a lien on your property." Scares the crap out of them, so they either go out and do it, or they spend money that they don't have, because they're not willing to call your bluff. And to me, it's just a bluff, because, you know, they, Brian, I know Brian's not here anymore, but Brian came in and he posted all of those lots on fairway a month ago. And since then, the, all the notices have blown away, the stakes are still there, but nothing's been done. So, I mean, they're calling your bluff, whatever that bluff is. But my concern is, is let's make sure we're not, we're not going and, and I want to say threaten, that's probably not, not a good term, but going to these people that really don't have the money and saying, "Look, you know, we can do this if you don't mow your yard." Because they're not going to, I mean, they're not willing to call your bluff, because they're not from that generation. But obviously, everybody else is. I guess I just want some clarification, that is it different if you have a house and own a lot, or is it not different? Because when they do finally come and mow the fairway, they mow with an eighty and John deer with a brush hog in fourth gear, and when they leave, it looks worse than what it did when they got there. But that, somehow, that satisfies the city. Well, at least they made an attempt. Okay, did they? I mean, did they really make an attempt? I don't think so. But, you know, having property in the city bears responsibility. You bear a certain amount of, you assume the responsibility of taking care of that property. If you can't take care of it, sell it. Get rid, get it, get out from underneath it, so somebody else can take it and at least make a go of it. You know, Darla Johnson owns the property right to the west of me with no house, and she mows it every time she mows her yard, because she's responsible, you know? I don't want Darla under the bus, but she mows it, she doesn't have any house on it. And finally, the oil well got mowed, the inside the fence, so, but I know that's, you know, that's a whole nother issue, because that's an oil company. But all those other lots and, and, you know, we want to, we want to, we want to talk like, we want to improve the looks of City of Perry, and we're going to make you paint a, paint your building to match, you know, whatever else in a certain, but yet, you know, we allow Dollar Stores to grow up with Johnson grass to the point where you can't see over it. Where does the bluff finally come in? And somebody actually take a step and say, "We're going to mow it, and then we're going to charge you for it." I understand you guys are some crap for help also, but when does the, when does the bluff get called? You know? I mean, that's just my, I just want somebody to make me understand why having a lot in Perry without a house on it is any different than having a lot in Perry with a house on it. That's all I got. I mean, I just, I call, you know, a couple of, Kirsty knows, I call, me or my wife calls two or three times a week, because nothing ever gets done. I'm listening. So make it make sense. I know that's a cliche, but make it make sense. I'm listening. Why, why is the, why is the double, double standard?
I was just going to say, this isn't really, we're not allowed to really answer questions in this.
Okay, I got you. I got you. I appreciate it. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You'll, you don't have to. All right.
So, could you send us what the actual ordinance is?
Oh, yeah.
Because that sounded like my wife. She's as mad about the Dollar General store as anybody. So I'd just like to know, do we have the authority to go make somebody mow their yard? Because it just, it doesn't feel like it.
Yeah. Yeah, we do to a certain extent, and I'll send you the ordinance and kind of outline what that process looks like. There's some definite limitations, but ultimately, you have some authority.
Yeah. And also with this question to you about clarification between, you know, vacant lots versus, versus how.
There's no, there's no difference.
There's no difference, right?
There's no difference. The only difference is agricultural property. We can enforce our rules on agricultural property. But other than that, there's no difference. And there's a, there's a civil side and a criminal side. We can bring charges in municipal court against anyone that won't, that won't mow their grass. All it has to be is twelve inches, twelve inches weed, grass, or whatever, and we can bring charges against them. Or we can send them a notice, give them an opportunity for a hearing if they don't come for a six-month period, we can continue to mow that grass, and as long as we send them a notice, we can charge them that cost, then place a lien on their properties. Those are the rules. I know we're not supposed to talk, bring these questions, but I mean, you guys have questions, and, you know, I mean, I want to make sure you've got the answer. That is the answer.
Perfect.
Civil side, criminal side, a lot of these folks may not live here, not Dollar General, you know, not, not Dollar General or any of these businesses. Owner or person in lawful control, that could even mean a manager.
Perfect. Thank you, Russ. Okay. Item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. So we just have our council reports. We'll start with the word one. Scott's not here. Shea? All right. Word two, Joe?
No.
Austin?
Nothing.
Danette?
I had someone previously ask about the Seventh Street at, close to Wakefield, where the water goes through the culvert, and how some of the edges of the road had started to go away, and then we had this other big rain. I just wondered if, I thought we had already had somebody looking at that, but I haven't looked at it after this last eight inches we got.
Right.
To see if it had done more damage there or not.
And Nate, you were there.
It did more damage, yeah. Yeah, it did more damage to it. It's already deteriorating. I'm looking, we have a few of those culverts on our repair list. Is that Seventh and Wakefield, you said?
Close, close to.
Yeah. That's on our repair list, and we don't have a cost for it. I think Critter said he thinks he could do it for, I don't remember if it was that one or the other one, for thirty thousand. So it's just a budget, it's just a budget issue right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Is this repair list something that you guys already had been looking at, or is it something right after the storm?
No, it's already, yeah, it's been like this for, it's slated for twenty twenty-seven, so it's been on here for half a year. Fur, I'm going to know is the other one that we have on here. Those two.
Randy?
I've had someone ask me again about the lights on fur. It looks like there's less and less of them every night that are still working. Do we know what's the issue? And you look at it like I'm.
I wasn't aware that more, more of them are out.
It may not be, but there's several of them that are.
Like the color of the light, or they're just out?
No, no, they're just out.
I'll have to, I'll have to look at it closely. You know, there's one up in that area that it's a, it's an underground issue that they haven't identified, but that's the only one I'm aware of, so I'll look into it and see what's going on.
And then the other one is the sewer on Pecan Street. Has that, has that been fixed?
Just about, yeah. They were halfway done Friday, and Vernon said he would have his guys stay late, but I haven't been able to follow up to see if they got finished.
Anything else, Randy? Derek?
Jimmy and Randy stole my thunder with your answer. I've had several, I'll just add that I've had several people mentioning that.
In same areas or different areas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just in general, everywhere, the stores especially.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item number six, city manager remarks.
So I just have a couple of things. The first is to thank all of our crews for their hard work during that last large storm. I mean, that was a, it was a ten-year storm from what I've been told, lots and lots of water. Crews were out closing roads, checking on city assets, so I appreciate their hard work during that period of difficulty. We actually came out really, really good. I told the council about this already, but just for the public's sake, we didn't have any major damage, other than like a little bit of deterioration around those culverts. So really, really blessed throughout that process. Second thing, Twenty-Fifth Street Sewer and Water Extensions, that is a REIT grant that we applied for and received last year. Just wanted to let the council and public know that we have applied for and received the DEQ permits for those projects, and so we will be going out to bid the first of July on those, so they should commence shortly after that, which is exciting. And then the last thing I wanted to update on is the sidewalk projects on Seventh Street and on Lucas. I was out with McHarkin Associates, our engineering firm, this last week on that project, looking to finalize their kind of design plan. Next step is they'll submit that design plan, and they'll actually come to a council meeting and talk through some of the things that I think will be some of the most topics with you as council members, which will be really cool and fun, to get your take on things. And at that point, they'll kind of submit that plan, and we'll start, we'll start getting easements and get that process really rolling. So they're moving along, I've been really impressed with them. Those are the only two projects I wanted to discuss, unless council has questions regarding any others going on.
What about fur? You mentioned the other two, what about the fur?
I think it's still in the ODOT environmental process, which is the biggest holdup for this whole process.
So it's behind the other two, or is it?
No, it's, yeah, those, the other two have not hit that ODOT process yet.
And this is to take it out to the ball fields?
Correct.
Thank you, council. Thank you. Nate? All right. Item number seven, our CFO report on our financials.
Is that your financials at your desk? Just maybe hit a couple of highlights here, although could talk for an hour, but then we'd miss the thunder game, right? Shea would not be happy with me if I spoke that one, which. Always kind of try to talk, start with big pieces that we look at outside these numbers. These guys can always look at numbers and read what's on the page. But our power cost adjustment, PCA, we add on to the electric bill that everybody gets, was at a negative point zero six this month. So again, you're going to see pretty much wholesale cost of electricity is flat as compared to what, what we have budgeted and what OPA helped us build into the rate. So that's a good piece for us. We don't like big shocks in that number, especially when it was negative, that means that, you know, they've managed their contracts well, and the prices are down. Now, what happens with the price of gas, which is the largest portion of that fuel that we pick up, we'll see what happens here in the next year. But we've been very lucky this year as far as that goes. The other number that I always like to refer to, CPI, Super Price Index, you know, was up to about 2.3%, and we've been as low as 1.9 in the last quarter. We've got it up to 2.3 now, the fuel number 1.9, is what we were using during budget time when we were talking about all the reference numbers and leases. So we are just a little bit, but that's, it's second month in a row up over that low point in March that we had. Speaking of year-to-date numbers, I thought this was interesting, and I just thought out there for you all to look at. Total annual sales for last fiscal year inside the City of Perry were sixty-six point nine million dollars. Total se, not, these aren't our numbers, this is third-party taxable sales numbers that have happened outside. So with sixty-six point nine billion, this year's total annual sales were up to seventy-eight point eight million. So, you know, had a, had a nice deep increase of almost twelve million dollars in, in our total sales. Resulted in an additional four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in sales tax across the entire city. To the general fund, that was an extra hundred and nine thousand dollars for the year. So just kind of a number that you guys always like to know, big picture things. You're not going to find that in these numbers, but I thought if I shared that, kind of gives you a reference piece. The, the big driver was significantly, you know, use tax has, has played a big piece in our total tax collections for the year. You know, total tax collections that used were up almost nine percent. Had actually started, use tax, big collections had really started last June, and so coming in this June, if I tell you what the, we're down thirty-seven percent in use tax this June over last June. But last June was a hundred thousand dollar use tax month, which just doesn't happen. I mean, our sixty-eight thousand honestly is a really, really good use tax collection number, but again, down from prior years. So just kind of some, some economic pieces that are outside what's going on in the city. If we do pick up the city and kind of look, we do have budget amendments coming up next, which will correct the majority of these pieces, but, you know, we ought to be really happy with at least percent of budgets that the majority of all of our departments are running at. Those expenses, the department heads have done really well. Matter of fact, you know, we did February amendments, which are kind of based on January numbers. You're going to see, when we do these budget amendments, we've got like three or four that we really have to deal with this time. And it's more just more housekeeping, just a couple of outlay items on there, and some extra engineering costs are going to be what you really see in the budget amendments coming up. But everything else, as far as operating expenses and those kind of things, looks really good. Overall, not really any comp that I'm worried about related to the city and how we're going to close out the fiscal year.
So you have a whole nother month.
We have one more month, yes. These are many numbers, we'll have one more month to add on. So those sales tax numbers and everything were actually twelve months, because I've already got June's sales tax deposits. So when I was giving you those numbers, that's for the whole twelve month versus twelve month. But yes, related to expenses and operating expenses, we do have one more month coming here. As far as percentage, ninety-two percent is kind of our rule of thumb, so expenses over ninety-two percent are really the ones that we're most concerned about, which, like I said, you're going to see the budget amendments aren't hardly anything. So for us, the seventy-eight point eight million dollar of sales or whatever, does that include things like automobiles? Or is that just stuff that's? No, that, that is taxable sales for, for City of Perry collectible sales. So that does include groceries, you know, because groceries on state level are not taxable at the state, but are taxable inside the city. That's probably the biggest number that runs that way. You know, everything else, as far as taxes go, are pretty much a dollar for dollar, taxed at the state, taxed at the city level.
Automobiles are not.
Automobiles are not taxed. Automobiles are, actually get a, an excise tax at the state level that we do not get at the state level, so.
Yep.
And they treat it as an excise tax.
I think you may have mentioned this before, but what drove that increase back in June?
The, the prior month, June, use tax is, so use tax is driven by items that come in from outside the state of Oklahoma that are, that are, the business that is remitting them does not have a fiscal presence in the state of Oklahoma. If you have fiscal presence in the state of Oklahoma, you remit sales tax, otherwise you remit use tax. Those use tax pieces were driven by construction.
Okay, my thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, you had, you had sales tax versus use tax before I actually gave. Your answer was?
I was afraid.
You made the construction-related pieces.
I was afraid it might have been my Amazon.
It could have been your Amazon.
That's where we got really far.
So I'm trying to remember what was going on last August that would have made that big gain. Well, we were finishing up completion out on the dealerships.
Oh.
Yeah, it makes sense. Now, I can't tell you exactly what that piece was, but in the trend of what was going on, that's where, where I was.
Construction.
That's where I would look for the big pieces. The, it could have been something coming in at Ditchwich, you know, I mean, I don't know that either. So I mean, if they would have had.
And you probably already told me this, but is use tax the same percentage as our sales tax?
Yes.
Yes.
Hotel motel, is that catch-up, or is?
Hotel motel is catch-up, yes. We're in the process of, we've got to work out on a few months of collections, so for the next three more months, we should see a little excess sales tax collection, so, I mean, hotel motel tax collection.
All right. Any other questions for Russ? All right, thank you, Russ. All right. Moving on to item number eight, our quarterly report presentation, Cherokee District Museum Director, Maddie Flores, not Maggie.
I got to do a little thing about what you guys were designing. I'm passing it down. Okay, well, we are reporting on our second quarter, and we're almost finishing up, and I just wanted to start by thanking you all. Lawrence called me after our last city council meeting, let us know about our annual increase for a stipend, so I let our board members know as well, and everybody's just very grateful for that. It, it really frees us up in a way that it covers our utilities fully now. So what money we did spend on utilities, we can give back to our community. So community outreach and things like that is what we see more doing, which we're going to do, and I'll talk about a little bit in the report later on. But just being able to do any extra funding we get, be put back into our community, so events that are free, ways that we can, you know, educate that are mission-driven, learning our local history for students, families, and just being able to do that is a great thing. So we really, really appreciate that, so thank you. And I'm just going to touch on some past activities of the higher notes. So we hosted a Black Center demonstration in May, and we had about thirty people out there. We had a nice Barbie queue volunteer appreciation meal for some of our Ditchwich crew who helps take care of our lawn, and then just other various volunteers who help us throughout the year. So it was nice to be able to recognize them and see familiar faces out there. And then just to kind of give an overview of our attendance for Roseville School this year, we had two thousand sixty-five students and parents through, from August through May. So it was a great year out there. We just, you know, we're, in the summer, we're able to kind of catch our breath. So I know we're a little hidden back there, but we stay really, really busy in the school year, so we're able to get things done this summer, which is really nice. And then I'm so excited to share, all of our roofs are done. They started right during all of the rain, so they had to be there on and off, on and off. But it's finally all completed, and we did that with the state of Oklahoma. They funded that through the Oklahoma Historical Society. And then, of course, the flash flood, we, we didn't experience damage, but we did have quite a bit to clean up, which brings us to why we had to postpone our Sounds of the Prairie event. We just, we had to clean out a lot of muck in buildings, but it didn't damage anything, so that's great. Best-case scenario, for sure. And then I'm just going to talk about a little bit of what we have upcoming within the next couple of months. We are going to be out at the Main Street Community Event, their little summer fest, and we'll be there doing outreach and games and filmmaking, and we'll have a school marn out there and just be able to share a little bit of information and have fun things for kids to do. And then lastly, we're going to have our Frank O'Ma pottery class, which is now fully booked. We had such a great response to that, we opened up another class, and that class filled up quick, so we might try to do a third class, I don't know yet. I'll have to talk about that. So that's what we have coming up. We are working on more programming through the end of the summer, but I don't have too many details on that right now. And then lastly, this. details on that right now. And then lastly, this is kind of in, in the future, but we are in the beginning plans of a, a new plaza addition, expanding, not expanding, but an entirely new parking lot and facility maintenance projects that we have anticipated for 2026. So this will also be through Oklahoma Historical Society since we're a state site. And then also, I've talked to Nate just a little bit about it. We'll make sure we're meeting city codes with all of our parking lots and things like that, but we're really not in that phase yet. So that's going to be a lot of exciting things happening, quite a bit of construction in the coming year. So that is about all I have for this quarter. But if anybody has any questions.
What, what is a plaza addition?
So the plaza, and I don't know too many details. All I've seen is architect mockup. It's going to be like an expansion of our entrance. So we just built a new entrance, but they're going to make a new, bigger entrance. So they're going to add on to it, too. Like more.
At, at the street or at the entrance of the building?
So, no, not at the street, but at the front of our building. And then we're going to expand parking out both ways. And then we'll have a big kind of a landscaping in the very middle. So it'll be like kind of circle drive feel, but it's kind of hard to explain. But it'll just be a much bigger parking lot and more to look at. So there's going to be a big middle center that you can see really well from like Love's. So I don't really know that, what a plaza really means, but I think it's just a more grand entrance when you come up to our museum. So, yeah, we're in the beginning phases of that. We'll, we're with Nate to make sure those parking spaces and things are correct to be. So, thank you. Yeah, of course.
So, so the two thousand plus people that you brought to our community, do you have a feel, is that about normal or is that above or below or?
So it actually, it's pretty much been the exact same forever, since the eighties. And I, I thought the same thing this year. I thought, I wonder if that's better or worse because we lost all of Jinx Public Schools last year, which was a huge hit, which was probably half of our schedule. So we had to go out and do some recruiting, and we actually did have a waitlist, too. So we were able to bring those people up off the waitlist, and then we had a lot of others, you know, little private schools and things like that who got to experience it. So we filled our calendar right back up, and these people are all coming back. So, yeah, it's always been around two thousand from what I've seen. So, yeah.
Do you think that's like a max, really?
Well, no. I just, we opened up our schedule to being Monday through Friday now for Rose Hill School only. So next year, we are going to probably fill up all those Mondays, too. We have about seventy percent of those Mondays filled up. So next year, I'm sure attendance will be higher. And I think way back in the day, they probably did Mondays as well. At some point, they stopped opening the program on that day for some reason. But we've opened it back up because we have a waitlist again. So we want to be able to let those people come if we have an extra day and the staff for it, which we definitely do now. So.
That's great.
Yes.
You're doing an amazing job out there. Your leadership is really showing.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Did you guys have a date for the Sounds of the Prairie?
So we're, we're working on a new date with the band. I'm really trying for it to be in the summer, though, because that's kind of the aspect of it, is a summer concert, just kind of laid back. So it'll probably be later in the summer. I need to touch base with them. So they, they do have other gigs, so they're going to try to make it work for us.
Great. Yeah, like everybody said, we're excited for the things that you're doing and appreciate.
Thank you.
All the work that you guys are putting in.
Thank you all. Okay. Well, I think that's all I have for this evening. So.
All right. Thanks, man. Okay. Item number nine, consider approval of budget amendments to the fiscal year 2024, 25, general fund and other budgets at the end of the year.
These are just the end of year cleanup pieces. You know, there's seven different things that we just kind of need to get cleaned up, mainly capital projects, things that are coming in. There, there is, there's two increases in revenues, whether that's sales tax, budgeting an extra three hundred and forty thousand dollars in sales tax across the funds, and the increase in PMA related to water and sewer, that are kind of rectifying where, where those projections were. You know, we did a preliminary number in February, really just enough to kind of cover what we knew the extra expenses were at this point. This is now picking up the rest of those expenses. And, you know, it is going to result in a little bit of net decrease for the PMA for the year solely because some of the capital project dollars, you know, won't be collected until we get more in the next fiscal year. So again, we're good. Doesn't create budget deficits. These are all in line with everything that you guys are required to do structurally. So you all really just need your blessing to, to get these passed and move, move on down the road.
Anyone have any questions on that, around those?
What is this increase in transfer for thirty-five thousand to PIN fund?
So we had only budgeted thirty thousand dollars in there. Whenever we got to the, in the last year, the fund balance carryover, we did enough, enough fund balance carryover so to make sure PIN stays in balance. It's a total of seventy thousand dollar total transfer to PIN for the year. And so that's, that, that's what it takes to subsidize. So PIN effectively is made up of the, the franchise fee that we get off the PIN network plus then any transfers we put in to revenue sources. Tyson's department is, so Tyson and all of the IT and everything he does inside of that is all expensed within PIN. So that seventy thousand dollars is the net subsidy that we had to send to PIN to keep. We call it PIN just because that's where it's always been, but it's effectively Tyson's IT department is, is what it truly becomes. Tyson's probably going to like, put like fire on my head or something. I'm more concerned for even saying his name. It's kind of a little dangerous around here. Kind of like talking about the newspaper, the person that buys, eating by the barrel, you don't talk about. The person that broadcasts your.
Face on.
Face on the screen, you don't talk about. See, there you go. Thank you, Tyson. It was Sammy that asked the question, not me, Tyson. She's one that deserves up close.
So do we handle all of the amendments one vote?
You all have already passed the February amendments. So I just, we try to leave those in there so you all as a total can see where we started the year, what was amendment, what was amendments, where are we now. You're passing the, the June amendments, is the call that we're actually asking for you all to approve.
Was in the general fund, the increase for admin, that's, is that what you said was?
The increase, yes, related in, in the admin itself was in, in the other charges and services, which came out partially related to insurance increases that.
Okay.
We ended up having to budget through. And the other part was part of the additional engineering expense that was picked up related to all the projects that spun up after we did the January changes. So.
And so that eighty thousand five hundred is part of its insurance?
Yes.
Is that like health insurance or property?
No, no, property, casual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I move we approve the budget amendment?
A second.
Second.
We're ready. Let's see if anybody has any other questions. Okay.
Good. Letso?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarm?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Yes.
No other question? For Russ, is there, is there a way we could have got these electronically to look at for tonight?
We were finished, finishing them up this afternoon. So literally, matter of fact, the reason that they're on two separate pages, the way they are for the general fund is we had print and ran out the door, and I thought that they were printed with all the columns on the page.
I just said, that's why we're.
Not printing correct.
And I should be able to see all the columns on the right page.
We, we will get you a cleaned up copy tonight. Matter of fact, tonight, yes. Though Chrissy will have in her email a cleaned up copy of that. So then you will have all of them on one page for the general fund. That was, thank you. That was more of a trying to get them all done. Let's hope we got financials finished, try to get them all done to make sure everything is in compliance.
It had to be, it had to be voted on tonight?
Has to be done before the end of fiscal year. Yes. So that's, it's just a admin house. If, so from a budget standpoint, you know, these are supplemental appropriations, you know, because we're actually adding revenues or we're adding expenses that couldn't have been reallocated from the other departments. We probably, we would have been close to get all of those allocated from other departments. I'd just much rather bring them back to you guys and get them approved as far as council goes, instead of trying to, trying to squeak by. Because Nate does have the authority to move within those departments. I mean, we could have covered the insurance with some of our other departmental savings. Probably the engineering would have been a little close. The, Paul was over, the capital projects over on the PMA side were what we couldn't have done. You guys really approved those as, as we've started working on the projects, but I'd just like to have them all just safe to put in a piece and here in front of you.
You grant that authority as part of the budget resolution each year?
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Item number ten, consider approval of a resolution of the city, or city council of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, authorizing the Perry Municipal Authority to incur indebtedness and issue a promissory note in the principal amount of not to exceed two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in no sense to provide for the financing of a Wyler paver machine with the Exchange Bank and Trust Company Bank, authorizing the negotiated sale of one promissory note with lender and waiving competitive bidding, establishing the city's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of tax exempt obligations by or on behalf of said city in calendar year 2025, and designating the note as a qualified tax exempt obligation directing the mayor and state clerk to execute required documents and take whatsoever additional actions may be required for the completion of the transaction. So that is the other document that we have in front of us, right? The sales agreement?
Yeah. Yep. That's the other document you have in front of you. So you see that the price, we've got a finalized price on that. It was not two hundred and forty-eight, ended up being two hundred and eighteen thousand, which is awesome. I may take it. We're in finalization with the, with Wheeler on that. So we weren't sure what the price would be. We knew it'd be below two forty-eight. So, and we got that this afternoon. So I guess, yeah, pretty straightforward. In this last year's budget, we budgeted to finance a asphalt laydown machine. For this year, with the intent of paying it off next year, which we'll still do, we're still planning on doing. No issues there, but we don't have the money to pay it off right now. Yet we want to do street now. And so the intent is, let's buy this, finance it, pay really minimal, really minimal interest at two percent, and then pay it off next year, but have started streets this year. So that's the purpose of, of this. The reason we're waiving competitive bidding is because we're just looking at the two banks here in town. We can go local.
So is the loan going to be for two eighteen, not two forty-eight?
Correct. Yes.
Do we need to say that?
Even absolutely.
The, the resolution's fine. It, it says not to exceed two fifteen.
Oh, okay.
I would note that the sales agreement needs to note that the purchaser is the Perry Municipal Authority, and that, and that you will sign as chairman of that and not the city of Perry, because the city can't borrow money and, and so that will be changed.
Thanks, Bryce.
Nate, what did you say, what did you say about the competitive bidding that it was waived? Why?
Because we're just looking at the two banks in town. So rather than throwing it out to anybody and getting three quotes on what would be the best rate, we like to keep it local and just do the two banks. Therefore, we waive the Competitive Bidding Act in order to do that. And that's a council directive.
Okay. But it's, it's Exchange Bank, is that what I'm seeing? Or is it still?
I think it's both, right? Exchange and First Bank and Trust is who we're asking.
Okay.
Oh, okay. You didn't have First there. It just.
But it said.
Exchange Bank and Trust Bank, Company Bank is in the description.
Yeah.
But it said the end of the description.
Did we ask both banks?
Uh.
No.
No. I think you just had Exchange Bank.
Yep. So we could, we could ask them to bid. We always do that.
In the background, you have Exchange Bank.
What's the process usually?
The, 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 the issue is that, that the First Bank, because of the way they're set up, they don't take advantage of, or they can't receive any benefit from tax exempt financing. Okay. So tax exempt financing for, for the one bank, they can use that, while the other bank, because of the way they're set up, can't use that. Now, that doesn't stop the fact that they were not asked. I know that because I know that, you know, that, that, that their interest in this kind of debt isn't there because of their corporate structure. What we had is we had a, a lease purchase agreement, which had a higher interest rate. It was over six percent. And Russ suggested that we put up one of our CDs and collect no interest on that in the amount of the, of the indebtedness, and that we only paid two percent. But that would be simple. And so on Friday at three o'clock or so in the afternoon, when this was presented to me, or maybe it was a little, an hour earlier than that.
A little earlier.
I made a call to the bank that I knew had an appetite for this and asked them if they could, if they could accommodate us on that. So that's how it came. And I stand corrected if there's anything incorrect about what I said, but I'm pretty sure that I'm right on, on the appetite. And then it's because of corporately how they're set up. Isn't that your understanding?
Historically, they have, yes, declined to participate in this.
Yeah. And we do, and we have CDs.
We have CDs. We have.
We have two.
We have CDs in both banks, but, but it's really the.
We have been.
For tax exempt debt.
Yeah.
Because of their corporate structure.
Thanks, Bryce.
I personally would still like to see us throw in at both of them. They can always decline.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was late, it was Friday, and I was just trying to get the agenda together and get it here so we could get ongoing to streets. But I certainly, I hear that. And, and we will do that in the future, or we can do that here. You can, you can authorize the approval of this and ask that both banks ask and see if either bank will sharpen their, their interest rate or their CD. You can, you can do that as a part of your motion. At least it's on the agenda and we can get this thing moving.
So the same CD kind of collateral could work at either bank.
Absolutely, absolutely. If they have the appetite for tax exempt financing.
And what do we do if they come back with the exact same offers?
How do you pick then?
You could designate that, that, that your city manager makes that, or your trust manager makes that determination. The, the motion would be to authorize the resolution to provide that both banks be given the opportunity that it go to the most competitive proposal. And in any event, that, that the trust manager makes that determination.
And what do we do if they come back with the exact same offer?
How do you pick then?
You could designate that your city manager makes that, or your trust manager makes that determination. The motion would be to authorize the resolution to provide that both banks be given the opportunity that it go to the most competitive proposal and in any event that the trust manager makes that determination.
Really no different than any other situation, right? When we get projects bid on, if they come back the same, I would then say, oh, well, we're going to go with some so.
So I've got one more question. The P285s, how does that kind of compare to what Blackwell has?
Very similar, yeah, very similar. Critter looked at, and his crew looked at several different models and ultimately settled on the P285 because it's a little bit smaller it can get in the alleyways that they want to do.
When I look at their website, it's kind of right in the middle. They make larger ones and smaller ones.
Yep. Yeah, we wanted something that could fit in the alleyways, but still wouldn't require tons and tons of passes for our wire sheets.
We didn't look at any used ones in that area or did we not find them?
We looked at some. It's just, we determined to look at a newer model because we don't have experience with these lay down machines in terms of, is this a good machine? A lot of the used ones are in Pennsylvania and other states, so it's, can't go out and examine them. So that's kind of where we went, this direction.
Big difference on what my understanding was on this number versus what we can get used?
Yeah, used is quite a bit less.
So aside from this piece, how many other pieces of equipment would we need to do streets or would this get us?
We bought the trucks. Well, we've mandated them to be built. They should be turned around in August, at which time we'll pay for them. But yeah, just the trucks and the lay down machine are the two big ones. The packer, we're going to use the counties until we find one. We're going to explore some options and see what we want, for sure.
And we got the grader?
We have the grader.
Right.
Got the grader, we're good with the lay down machine. And then the trucks, we're going to continue to utilize what we have, the counties plus these counties. So we'll be ready to go.
One point, we were told the roller wasn't what they.
They wanted something heavier, but they can make it work. They can make it work until they get something heavier or borrow something heavier. The idea behind the heavier one isn't that what we have works, but it would give us a better base with a heavier.
So timing on this, Nate, will it still let us get our, remind me, was it 15 blocks?
Yep, by the end of '26 is the goal.
Oh, by the end of '26?
Yep.
So we get this, when does this piece of equipment come in?
Probably August as well.
So do we have an estimate of what we can get done in '25?
Yeah.
That's my guess.
I haven't looked at it. We figure we can get quite a bit done. That's what Critter said today. He said, I think we'll be able to get quite a bit done before the end of the year.
Weather wise, I mean, last year we were kind of pushing it with that one street, right? Doing it in November?
Yeah, November.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we did it in November. So I mean, I figure we have, depending when they come in in August, we'll have, you know, some of August, all of September, all of October and maybe part of November. So we should be able to make some great progress this year. But I just bring up the end of '26 because that's the specific date associated with that goal. So that's my deadline.
Calendar '26.
Correct.
Okay.
I've been misspeaking. I've been telling people that the 15 blocks are kind of what we hope to get done annually. And I guess our plan though is to build a bigger number as we get more experience.
Right, I mean, we're going to do, we weren't sure when all of this would come to fruition, right? So were we going to get all the equipment before the end of this year? Were we going to have what we needed to get things done? We didn't know that. Turnaround times, you know, we didn't know that. And so, yeah, we're going to try to get as much done as we can this year. But at the end of the day, the goal that you guys set for me, written down as the end of 2026 for 15 blocks. Now, I'm not a procrastinator, so my plan isn't to leave that till the last couple of months. You know, we're going to get it done as much as we can.
So I mean, we may get like eight blocks, you know, before the end of this year, but next year we should be able to do the full 15.
Yep, yeah.
So that would be 23 blocks.
I think that's really feasible.
Okay, I agree.
I'm just anxious to get started because I want to be able to show the public we can multitask.
Yes.
But we have to have the equipment to do it.
Yeah, we've been working, I mean, council knows this. This has been a goal for a long time that we've been working towards and it's a lot of moving pieces and I think it's finally coming together. We have a county agreement that is really, really helpful to make this efficient and to fill in some of the gaps we have in the equipment and we're obtaining the extra equipment that we need to actually do this effectively. And I think, I really think that the public's going to be very pleased with the outcome of this, even starting this year.
Is there anybody on staff that knows how to identify the mix that they're picking up?
No, we don't.
Yeah, asphalt?
I wish we didn't. But you're kind of at their mercy too because they do it, they're not making it for you. You know, they're making it for these bigger projects and they just let you participate in it.
So is there a permanent batch plant that we will be getting this from or do we have to?
Permanent what?
Batch plant, we're going to be buying this all the time for the asphalt?
I thought it was Panka City, are you not buying it from Panka City?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Where do we get the asphalt from?
Where are we getting the asphalt?
From Panka City. That's one place. There's a couple of other options and it just, again, depends, you know, we call them up and say, hey, we're wanting this much asphalt this day. Our pieces usually drop in the bucket. And so they say, hey, we can do that because we're doing this other large project. We'll just make a little bit more for you guys.
Where are the other places? Because it was my understanding that you had to keep it hot and that's why you guys chose Panka because it's the quicker.
Yep, it is. It's the closest we have, but there are two others that are within range. I think there's one in, oh, I don't want to just spit out Oklahoma city names, but there are two others. And Critter told me today that there's one being built, I don't even remember what he said, 52? Or something, I believe 52. He said it would be by far the closest, which there's a sign for it. We're just not sure if that's going to be a temporary thing for some projects going on or if it's going to be a permanent plan.
Well, I would think it would depend on the time of the year, but in August it may actually get hotter as you're driving.
Yeah, great questions, Council. Anything else for me on this?
I just want to go back to the process as far as banks and decide like if we want to, I forgot what you said, Bryce, like change the wording. I do think best practices moving forward should be that both, at least the conversation about what it should be and then if we could change this one for both to have that opportunity. Now, I'm not sure timeline and stuff, but I think that would be good, be good partners.
Yeah, I love that. I love the competitive, you know, competitive bidding is just always a benefit for those on the receiving end. And I think, you know what, I put them in a pretty tight spot this weekend with getting these numbers.
Yeah.
Last minute.
Yeah. Understand that.
So we need to change that that the bid is, the purchase order is to be, the purchaser is supposed to be PMA?
That's correct.
And not the city of Perry?
That's correct.
And then that we issue a request for a bid from both banks and whichever one is better, we proceed as planned. Is that the gist?
I'll second that.
So moved.
And just for clarification that I can in the future, so usually with these loans, do those bids come to us or do you make that decision? Do we decide on the?
It would come to you guys. It's way above my limit.
Okay.
Well, I mean, to get this rolling, I mean, call them up and unless you want to do a sealed bid process, I mean, I'm telling you that they may say something completely different. Because of their corporate structure, they're a C corp, right?
Is that what they are?
Because of their corporate structure, they can't take advantage of tax exempt debt. Doesn't mean anything to them. For the other bank, tax exempt debt means something so that they can offer something lower. Doesn't mean that they might go, hey, the CD, we'll do it for 4% and a half. They might, but as far as appetite for tax exempt debt, they've never had an appetite for it. So I would suggest if we want to get rolling with this, that we would just call up both banks and say, we're going to put a CD in the amount of $218,000 there. You don't have to pay any interest on this. This is a 24-month obligation. What is your interest rate that you'll pay double tax exempt? And for first, it won't mean anything, but they'll give us a number. Exchange will give us a number and then we will move forward at that point with whichever one's best for us.
So maybe slightly change your wording then to say that we're approving the loan, but we're going to leave it up to Nate to choose the body that we do it with.
I think that's what you did.
That's what I just said, yeah.
It's still waiving competitive bidding, right?
Right.
Well, any kind of formal competitive, I mean, we're not putting it out to the world. We're going to ask her two banks.
Right.
Well, I thought that the competitive.
Well, keep the resolution like that. This is a form resolution, which is for tax exempt debt, that's the way we need to keep it. Whether we ask both banks or not, it needs to look like this.
I think your is, I think your motion is right on.
Yeah. Keep it, everything the same except for to go ahead and ask for both banks and then also that the PMA was purchasing us.
And you moved and Randy seconded. All right, any other questions or discussion on that?
Lutzow?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Roth?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Russ, will you take care of that, just a little ditty sent to both banks on that obligation? And then if anybody wants to see them, they can come in and see them. We'll send it out tomorrow to both banks and then make that decision if that's okay.
Item 11, any new business? Item 12. Consider convening into executive session for the purpose of one, performance review, city manager Nate Reed pursuant to Title 25, Section 307b.1 of the Oklahoma Statute as amended. And two, for the purposes of discussing negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 137, pursuant to Title 25, Section 307b.2 of the Oklahoma Statutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Lutzow?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Roth?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
All right, item thirteen, reconvenance to regular session.
Subdue.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes. Item fourteen, take any action deemed necessary after the executive session. We just don't have any other than Nate and I will be meeting together tomorrow to go over your performance review. So with that, item fifteen, adjourn.
Subdue, second. And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes.
Good.
All right. Let's call our meeting order for the periminiscule authority.
And coffee. Bledsoe.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Coldarn.
Present.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Rocha.
Here.
Worthing.
Here. All right, we've got core, item one, consent agenda.
Uh, budget approval.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes. Item five, consider approval of budget amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 PMA budget.
What? Uh, that's not what I see.
So Jen?
You went down two floors. I did the, I did the same thing.
Oh, how long? Okay, nevermind.
You're back.
He said PMA. We're on PFA.
I was on PFA. Motion to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
All right.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes. Item six, consider approval resolution of the Board of Trustees of Periminiscule Authority authorizing the occurrence of an indebtedness and issuance of promissory note in principal amount of not to exceed $248,000 in no sense to provide for the financing of a Wylder paper machine with the Exchange Bank and Trust Company Bank, authorizing the negotiated sale of one promissory note with lender and waiving competitive bid providing for the approval of a promissory note and any and all required loan documents approved by the Chairman of the PMA with approval of PMA's legal counsel and the payment of any fees necessary incurred in consummating this transaction providing for the pledge of a certificate of deposit with the lender in the amount of the promissory note for the term of this indebtedness with no interest paid directing the Chairman and Secretary to execute any and all required documents and take whatsoever additional actions may be required for the completion of the transaction and issuance of the promissory note.
Motion to approve with the ammen- amendments that were made in the city agenda.
Second.
Good job.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes. Item seven, approval of the Economic Development Agreement styled as an agreement with Outback Investments LLC for the operation and maintenance of the electric distribution system in Stonehill addition and provision of electric power providing for any conditions required for its implementation if any.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes, item eight, adjourn.
Subdue.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we'll call our meeting order for the Perry Facilities Authority. Avril call.
And coffee. Bledsoe.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Coldarn.
Here.
Rupp.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Rocha.
Here.
Worthing.
Here. All right, item one, consent agenda.
Action to approve.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes. Item five, adjourn.
Subdue, second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldarn.
No.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yes.
Worthing.
Yes.
Word sharp, I can stand it.